Good morning, good morning. And almost Merry Christmas, we're getting there. All right, let's see, Mr. Mayo's got the invocation, I think he's got somebody coming in, and then we'll do the pledge, I've got that, then we'll do the organization, now we'll turn it over to Mr. Parker at that point. Approval of minutes, is there any adjustment to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have one addition we would like to add. It is the adding of two law firms to be approved for, to do the legal work for the HMGP project for the CDBG. So that's for the property acquisition. So we've sent out requests for proposals, these two firms have agreed to do it as well. So this will help with our pool of attorneys and surveyors as we start the buyout program.
So we don't need one firm, we're gonna need two.
We have multiple firms, we have multiple teams. So the quicker we have multiple teams, the quicker the process will go.
I don't see need to just put it under, consider it, put it as number six.
Yes, sir. But that's the only thing I have this morning.
Okay. Any other from commissioners? Okay. All right, then we have public comments, and we do have some appointments.
Yes, yes.
And the exclusions, we've been through those, and they look okay, don't they?
Yes, sir.
And then we got this subdivision plat for Goose Creek. You want to go ahead and go over that map, Barry?
Do you want to go over the budget amendments first?
I am so sorry. Push the things, push the things right along, right up.
You were gonna make her day.
Yep. Budget amendments. I'm sorry.
Either way you guys, we only have two on the meeting today. Number one is five, which is for the detention center. This budget amendment is needed to read, allocate $6,000 from kitchen supplies and maintenance of repairs equipment. Issues with the security equipment for the jail doors and related warrants. You're talking to the county to second the event with service. This also requires purchase of the door security equipment and related maintenance fees.
Is that the new jail here with you? Or don't you know?
I do not know that for certain.
I believe, we've had Camry issues with the new jail, but lock issues with all the jails.
Better to fix the locks.
Yes, sir.
And the last one is now a line of authority for the sheriff's office requesting to anticipate an appropriate $5,121 for sheriff's programs and supplies. These monies are revenues received from calendar sales and donations for the sheriff's office to be used within the sheriff's office budget for special program materials.
All right, any questions? Move right along, Barry.
Good morning, D. Subdivision this morning is Goose Creek Phase Six, it is a preliminary plat. The property is owned by Randy and Marty McCall, there's 29 lots on 22 acres. It is on Norium Road, actually just north of the existing Goose Creek, if you're familiar with that subdivision. It'll actually tie into Goose Creek. There'll be a tie-in there into a stub-out that's already existing, and there'll also be a direct access onto Norium Road. The average lot size is about 26,000 square feet, 26,119 specifically. The planning board has reviewed the preliminary plat and recommends approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Have you had any, have you had any complaints from any of the residents around this area?
I have not, I haven't heard from any neighbors.
Okay. I had, I had one that's concerned about the connecting road from the new park to the old park.
Right.
Especially on the Norium Road front. Is there gonna be any kind of buffers or anything from these other properties that's not part of the subdivision? Are there gonna be any buffers, or is it just gonna be a backyard backup like normal?
Yeah, there, there's no buffer that's proposed on the plat, it'll just back up through the lots that are already there.
I would, I would like, I'd like for us to, to look at the possibility of adding a buffer along those two properties up on the front that border Norium Road for privacy for existing residents.
Right. And applicant is here, and, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but applicant is here and may be willing to entertain that.
If I'm looking, if I'm, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I'm looking at this plat, now this little bitty plat, and my readers are kinda kicking in this morning, but anyway, it appears as if there's a stormwater right there on the property line between the existing butts property, is that butts?
Right, that's right.
And then it says it's a commercial area, what is that commercial?
It's a common area. It's gonna be a common area.
Oh, it's a common area.
Yeah, a common area that stays undeveloped, other than if there's a stormwater pond that's needed, there'll be a stormwater pond in there, and that'll be dedicated over to a homeowners' association.
Barry?
Yes, sir.
Could you take your point and go over there to, I can't read it, Steve, I can't see it. Your point, just, show us what you're talking about.
Because I actually remember, is that shit just here?
Okay.
And there, here's the butts property, butts front is here, and you said common area here, but a storm, potential stormwater base in this common area.
Well, the reason I bring that up is I don't know how you could be, build a berm if you're having a, is that a retention pond?
It would be, and again, this is a preliminary, so you know, things could be shifted, I'm sure, slightly in there at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. The issue is not, is not the area beside of the common area. The issue is, is the subdivision backside, I call it, where those properties connect on what I call the backyard part. That common area is really, I don't see how you can put a berm there, I don't think it's necessary. But I don't, it doesn't have to be a berm, it can be trees, right?
Right, it does not have to be a berm.
No, it doesn't have to be a berm, but you know, obviously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I think you have clarified this up. This, this Section Six had been farmland all my life. What Mr. Mayo was talking about, that is two existing properties that has got residents on it that had been there for years and years.
That's right.
And, and they just wanting some, a little bit of buffer of some kind, it's, that's, that's where we're coming to, is those residents, they have been there for years and years, you know, they've always had farmland, right? And now they're gonna be in a subdivision, and they just, they're just seeking a little bit of, of some type of buffer, the way I understand it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, you're right.
Just to clear that up. Barry, can you go over his outfit he's talking about? Because I don't wanna wish one you're talking about.
Them two. Okay. Those houses have been there for years.
They have, they were there way before. And there's a concern.
So much I was saying, y'all want a buffer in the backyard?
Yeah, of course.
Well, if you will, go back to that map there, if you will, Barry. Actually, behind the Ivy property, what is that triangular piece there? I mean, not triangular, but rectangular, yes, that one there.
That's, that's a proposed lot.
That is a, okay, okay.
That's what that is.
For a house we put on?
Yes, sir.
And so, the issue is that they want to put a buffer between those two, I guess, those two front, large front pieces in the subdivision?
That's, that's what I'm, I'm here.
And just out of my curiosity, what kind of housing and what kind of landscaping? I guess I'm wondering, is it, is that subdivision gonna be offensive looking? Because I mean, last time we talked about a buffer, it was the solar fields, you know, that's, that's a natural.
Right.
But I was just curious, if there's something about that subdivision that's gonna be unattractive?
No.
Or a shustet?
From what I understand, it'd be.
Some privacy based on strangers.
Right, based on strangers. It'll be, from what I understand, a site-built subdivision like the other one. So it's really just, you know, a neighbor issue, I guess you could say, and privacy issue at that point.
What do you think, what do you think, the typical house over there, what's the square footage, what is the cost?
Hmm, at this point, I'm not sure exactly, that hasn't been disclosed. But I would have to guess, and again, it's a guess, that it would be compatible with the area, but, but there again, that information has not been disclosed at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Don't hold me to it, but my understanding is, and I don't have anything to justify this other than what I've heard, is that these, these homes may be what you are, the patio home. I'm not, I'm not positive, but it really doesn't matter. The key, the key is, is that there needs to be, and Commissioner Acon is correct, there needs to be a, a buffer like trees or something like that because of the extra road that's coming in through the subdivision, it's gonna be a lot of traffic coming through there. And, and these two, these two residences up on the front that were just pointed out, they have been there for many, many years, and they're just asking, they're just asking for some, some type of privacy, and that's not unusual.
Right.
Well, Mr. Chairman, actually, I think it is a little unusual, because if you've got common usage, what you've got residents, I don't know of any time that we have gone in when we had the same usage of the land and actually put in a requirement that you put a buffer in. I'm not aware.
That's right, as far as I can understand, that's the case. The ordinance doesn't specifically require a buffer in a situation like this. Usually if it's unlike or dissimilar uses, you know, that's typically where you see that, like was mentioned with the solar farm and a residential, you know, those type of things. But residential to residential, typically we don't see buffers between those.
I would, I would just ask that, and you're right, it would be up to the developer, but I would ask that we go back and ask the, ask the developer, and confront them with this concern, and just see what they say. I know both of those developers, so I'll be honest with you, I don't think it would be a problem, but I, you know, I would recommend that we go back and just ask the question.
Yeah, and we could do that, and a representative of the developer is here, and has heard this discussion as well.
Yeah.
And so I can speak with him after the meeting as well, but, but he's, he's heard the concerns, and I'm sure he'll go back, and I'll ask him to do that as well, too.
Because this is a preliminary anyway, so it's not a final plat, so we got time to do that.
Let me ask Mr. Mayo something, I'm, I'm in a loss. When you say it's a patio home, I'm not familiar with that, but how's that different from just a regular?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Size and so forth and so on?
Yeah, I don't believe there'll be actual patio homes. What a lot of homes are going to now are, they no longer have crawl spaces, they're on slabs, and that could be what it is, like Goose Creek, not Goose Creek, but Gander Lake, for example, out on Piper Princeton Road.
Right.
That tends to be the model that, that homes are going to nowadays in subdivisions. So that, that's what I'm guessing that, that may be referencing is.
But my understanding is, is that, Mr. Carmody, is that the, this has nothing to do with the type of homes that are being built, this has to do with, with existing homes as far as privacy?
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against what those folks want, let me preface that. What I'm looking for is, is there something about this that we need to be watching down the road for other developments that may have some similar, if that cropped up again, I would want us to have some note somewhere that we would treat the next situation like...
And that is my concern, you're setting a precedent.
It's something we're going here, and not that I have a thing against them doing that.
Have Barry take back to the planning board and re-look at the ordinance and see what situations. I'm not asked to mandate it, I don't think, I'm asking to just go back and check, it's up to the developer.
And just say, yeah, and in a lot of situations, you know, in some situations, developer may be willing to do so. And so that's what we can do, is we can ask the developer if he would actually, if he would be interested or be willing to put in something there, basically to be a good neighbor, you know, to.
As long as it's a request, I've got no problem with it.
We can do that.
That's what I'm asking, a request, a request, don't worry.
All right, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and sometimes, based upon the size of the homes and how they're built and so forth and so on, we all know that that, that has some impact on the availability of those homes for folk, so, you know, there's, if it's, if it's on a slab, I don't know that that's a drawback, but, if more information, because I think we, and it's not, Mr. Mayo, it's not about those properties, they want privacy and it's deserving, fine, but I would want us to know that we were gonna do something with this one, and down the road, you wouldn't be put in a position.
Right.
Did this then, we are doing this now, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, right.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just check the developer, see can, ask and see can you get it worked out?
We can do it.
But, but one of the biggest concerns, that's got nothing to do with developer, all the people that own the property, is this is gonna put another mobile classroom at South Northwest Elementary School.
At least for that viewer, exactly right.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
All right, let's move on. Well, that's true. That's a good point, I think. Do you want to talk about the national motto?
Yes, sir.
The chairman's moving on.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, sir. We do have a resolution in front of us that has been recommended to place the Ingabwe Trust on our courthouse. This is a group that comes from Davidson County, they go across the state, and they put up Ingabwe Trust for free on buildings, and they can also put it here in our commissioner's chambers, if, you know, the commissioners like, you can put it in the back there. But it's a very common resolution, multiple, multiple counties and municipalities across the state have agreed to do this.
At no cost to us.
At no cost. The question is, do we, would you like to see Ingabwe Trust here in the commissioner's chambers?
I think that would be great.
So, that motion.
But they will put, they will, it will be aesthetically pleasing, you know, and meet on courthouse, but what they'll also do, you know, at our request on, on.
And I was giving some say-so on how it looks.
We, yes, we have to say, say so, yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
And, and this is a group coming from where?
Davidson County. They have gone, raised money and gone across the state with multiple municipalities and multiple counties, putting Ingabwe Trust on public facilities.
Right, yeah, they've been doing this for quite a few years, I believe, yes, sir.
Sometimes I can't help but wonder, when something new is thought of, why it hadn't been thought of before?
Well, they've been around.
A done, a done, well, no, a done by our in-county church groups or someone.
I think part of it's the money cost of putting the signage up, because some of it's not cheap. When I was in Alamance County, the same group came, and we put it on, we had two courthouses, and we put on two courthouses, we put it in the commissioner's chamber, they were great to work with, they really were. But it was a very positive thing, we probably did that five, six years ago in Alamance.
Mr. Chairman? Excuse me, just for information, as far as I know, all of the fire departments in Wayne County, the volunteer fire departments, has already put that slogan on the windshields of all of their equipment. So I think, you know, I think this is great.
Is everybody good?
Yep.
Moving on. And the resolution for the support of juvenile crime prevention?
It, just a resolution in support of additional funding from the state.
And I see Mr. Dustin is here.
Yes.
Keep care of him, expand on it any, or?
Um, certainly, commissioners are allowed.
Briefly?
The point here, gentlemen, is, and good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the point here is that the state allot funds to JCPC, the county distributes them through our JCPC organization. That allotment's been the same since 2009. Here in Wayne County, we included some statistics in this resolution, this is something that's been passed around statewide, and all counties are being asked to support this, to send to the legislature. We added in statistics from Wayne County of what we're facing right now, and the problems that we have, and the fact that we simply do not have enough in that state allotment to address the needs we have right now, and we're about to receive 16 and 17-year-olds into the juvenile system, and we don't have any additional money allocated. If the 2019-2020 budget cycle comes through from the legislature and there is not an increase, that'll be 10 years that we have not seen an increase in funding for JCPC statewide.
The resolution that you have for you is a little different from the one we used to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Right, I think what, the reason why we had two, we had a request from the state, and that was the one we put in the agenda packet first, so.
Yeah, the one from the state is just, was just a boilerplate, you know, asking the legislature to support, but our JCPC wanted to include specifically for our purposes what we're facing, things like, one of the statistics we have in here is that over 23% of juveniles assessed in Wayne County either self-identify as a gang member or are known to associate with gang members. That's three times the state average, and that statistic has doubled since 2014. And those are, and across the board, we're seeing those kind of numbers in our juvenile system. I'll tell you that, as in my experience as a defense attorney, and also through my work on the JCPC, we tend to, and I think our juvenile office does a great job, of not bringing the low-level offenders into the court system, addressing them through other means, and what we're seeing in our court system are the more severe, the more high-risk, the more high-needs juveniles, which is ultimately how the system should work, but it also means we've gotta have the ability to address those issues. And certainly, if there are any questions?
But this supports the same idea, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Right.
Questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, what's it sound like, if you're, you're requesting an increase based upon a projection and an assumption that the state is not gonna fund what they mandated?
Yes, sir. When the...
Well, just a minute. Have you had direct conversation with a state-level agency to find out if there's anything in the pipeline, or through one of our legislators from the area, is there anything in the pipeline that was caused you to believe that there wouldn't be funding?
Well, sir, I'll say that I have not directly had any contact with any of the higher level in the state legislature in regards to this.
Maybe I'm in a loss, who's up the line of, who's in the county up the line of chain that would make that kind of a...
We will send this to our local resolution, to our local delegation as well, and make them aware of the concern that, you know, that is statewide, but also we have here locally with JCPC funding.
I'm not, I'm not against an increase categorically, but as I look about over the last deal to what I've seen, Raleigh talking about spending money, I would want us to make a request for this to be funded, since it seemed to be a move in Raleigh to spend money on a lot of this thing.
Yes, sir, I understand. The reason that this came about, when the Raise the Age legislation passed as part of the budget amendments two years ago. In that process, they did include funding for increased number of juvenile court counselors statewide, and they also provided funding for building a detention facility in Rockingham County to house juveniles, a specific juvenile detention facility. And they did say, and they gave overtures, that there would be additional funding for prevention-based programs like JCPC. However, that piece of the proposal has not fallen into place, and December 1, 2019 is when that legislation takes effect, and we still have not seen that increase in allocation, we've not seen any, and in fact, I'm not seeing any legislation that's been proposed to provide that increase. And so that's why this came about, it's just as a somewhat gentle reminder, you said you were gonna do this, now it's time to get it done.
Last thing, so this resolution is for us to advocate for you to get money from Raleigh, not for us to directly fund yourself?
Right. This is completely state, this is completely state funding and...
Oh, all right, okay.
I'd love to fund it.
Now, if I may, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I wanted to say this to you because I do understand funding is an important topic when we discuss things. This resolution is not the purpose, is not for the purpose of asking the commissioners for money, it is not. However, I will say, as the vice chairman of JCPC...
Since you opened the door!
Since you opened the door, thank you, Mr. Carmody. As the vice chairman of JCPC, it's my responsibility to advocate for the youth of Wayne County. If the state does not increase their allocation and does not make moves to increase their allocation, I will tell you that I will be back to ask you through formal process and do whatever I can to advocate for the JCPC programs that we have and the youth of Wayne County, to ask you to provide some money to help us as well. This past year, we had over $400,000 in requests, and we only had $330,000 to allot. That meant we had to cut existing programs, we had to shift things around to be able to provide the services that we needed and the services that Wayne County needs. And so if we can't get it from the legislature, I will do everything I can to get it from you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think the main thing that we need to get the message to Raleigh is, and I think you'll agree, it's, it's cheaper to try to keep them out of incarceration than, than keep them in incarceration. I mean, and the goal is, is to try to help the youth and lead them in the right direction.
Sorry, but the current numbers is it costs the county $125 a day to send a juvenile to detention, and it costs approximately $140,000 a year to send a juvenile to a youth development center. Two youth and youth development centers is our entire budget at JCPC.
We'd rather have them at Wayne Community College than in...
Yes, sir, mistake.
Educations, everything.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is, with me, I'd vote if I asked to go back to the Goose Creek plaque, I've omitted a question that I needed to ask, while Barry's here.
It's a good thing he came back.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. I wanted, I wanted to get a clarification, Barry, there is a HOA in the subdivision?
Right, there will be for, for this subdivision, there'll be an HOA.
Okay, it goes to my next question. The common area, is it gonna be a play area for kids, that's just gonna have places, you know, swings and slides and this kind of thing in the common area?
No, no, the common area, they're setting aside primarily for the purpose of stormwater management or any future stormwater ponds, and then whatever's left in those areas will just be open, it's open space, I guess you could say.
Okay, that answered my question, because I'm, I'm in a subdivision, we have a common area, but it's full of swings and so forth, and in that case, you would need a fence of some type, you know, along the property line, so, thank you, I appreciate you.
Well, since we have Barry back up, that's one, that's one quick one.
Sure.
Streets and so forth and so on, well, this subdivision, have we injected anything into our regulations stuff for what, it's gonna ensure that those streets are paved and turned over to the state in an appropriate amount, and down roads, somebody won't have these things, potholes?
We do, yeah, the ordinance does require, one, that it be paved for, and that it be paid to DOT standards, and with that, we require a built-to-standards letter now from DOT, where DOT will actually go out there up front and inspect the streets to make sure that they're built to DOT standards. What we've seen in the past is that you can have streets paved, you can label them on the plat as public, and DOT will sign the plat that says that the streets are designed to their standards, but there was really nothing that made sure that they were actually built up front to the standard. So you were seeing them deteriorate quickly because they were, the initial construction wasn't up to par. So we're trying to get ahead of that, we require this built-to-standards letter to make sure that it does up front meet those standards.
In other words, the developer's gonna pave the streets, and then DOT is gonna come out and certify that it's correct?
That's right.
Fully blown, don't, to all of their standards?
That's right.
But, Mr. Chairman, it's still up to the developer to apply... But, Mr. Chairman, is still up to the developer to apply to the DOT?
It is. The developer would still have to apply to DOT. DOT cannot take over a street when it's first paved. There's requirements that there has to be a certain number of homes on the street, and have to be a certain number of occupied homes on the street before DOT can take it over. So that's why you kind of see that gap between construction and when they're taken over, is that you have to get a certain number of residents there, living there before DOT will even entertain a petition.
Well, one of the biggest issues was, and is, is that during construction, do we have anything in place that when a driveway tile was put in, that it's, that we're sure it's put into DOT specs? Because that's been the big issue in these older subdivisions.
We've crossed a bridge here that's always been crossed. All of this is in the county regulations now.
I know, but if it's not being...
I mean, in the older subdivisions, it want, but everything that goes before the planning board now, all these restrictions and guidelines and requirements is in it.
I understand, but if it's not followed through, that's what I'm interested in, is if it's on the book and it's not being followed through, the DOT is not going to take over that subdivision if the driveway tile is not correct.
Right. And, right, we do require performance, yeah, we do require bonds, and we do have some things that our ordinance that address standards, like our stormwater ordinance with the flow of water through ditches. That helps with those things now. So like you said, some of the older subdivisions, before those standards were in place, that we're now trying to go back and look at, there are some problems, but I feel like what we have in place now between stormwater and our current ordinance and DOT's initial looking at it, is going to really help in the future with a lot of these.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Barry, one last thing. It sounds like, based upon the fact, there's got to be a certain number of homes on the street and so forth and so on, and no one can guess how quickly some developers are going to get the houses. So there's still a gap in there, isn't there? Those streets could be aged before you hit that mark as the number of houses that need to be on the street.
That's right. And what I've seen in the past is, you really run into that problem more so. It becomes worse when you have a downturn in the economy, where you have a subdivisions that's built, and then construction stops, and then you do have a really extended period of time. Nowadays, it doesn't seem to take that long, and developers are a little more careful with what they record. They do smaller phases and get that on the ground and built versus doing 50 to 100 at a time like you used to see 15, 20 years ago. So there is that potential there, but at this point, I think we're seeing it improve somewhat.
And what school does this going impact? Somebody said it would be Minnesota.
Northwest.
Northwest.
Thanks for coming back, Barry.
All right, no problem.
Thank you.
All right. Then we'll have county manager comments, board commissioner comments, and if we need a closed session, for what reason?
To consult with your attorneys, to have attorney-client privilege, and to discuss the competence and performance of county officers and employees.
Is a motion to go to closed session.
I agree.
Motion number four, end of discussion. I was the paper, Mr. Reg. Ryan.